Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Georgetown County Board of Education for this evening, October 5th, 2021. We will open with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everybody would please stand. Thank you very much. Now please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you very much for being here. The first part of our meeting is devoted to public comments or requests. We ask that you limit yourself to three minutes and try not to be repetitive. And be respectful of each speaker, please. First card I have received is from Nicole Isaiya. I hope I didn't butcher that name too badly. Ms. Nicole, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Let me get my notes up. I'm Nicole Isaiya. I'm a clinic clinician, scientist, and a mother of two children in the school district. Last year, my children wore masks and they suffered. They came home exhausted with headaches and frequent nosebleeds. They had low oxygen saturation as measured by their doctors. This year, we haven't had any of those problems. My daughters were having such a hard time wearing masks that their pediatrician wrote them a medical mask exemption. Medicine is not one size fits all. When a patient suffers a side effect from a medication or a medical intervention, it's discontinued. Some individuals can tolerate masks with no problem, but others will experience side effects and mask use should be discontinued immediately. Using MUSC and state data, our cases are trending down, and this is without mask mandates. I combed through the scientific literature related to masking and found the following evidence, which I sent the references already via email. Children spread COVID much less than adults. As with adults, asymptomatic spread in children is less than 1%. Teachers do not face an increased risk from children. Schools have not driven the spread of COVID. The effectiveness of masks is not proven. Any impact from masking assumes correct use. Masking children correctly is unrealistic. Improper masking is common and unsanitary. Schools without masks have not fared worse. Masks can hinder speech development in children. Deaf and disabled children struggle to learn with masks on. Masking could cause headache, fatigue, nosebleeds, and other health issues. Masking can cause a wide variety of health issues. Mortality rate among children is zero for children without preexisting medical conditions. Children have strong preexisting immunity to COVID. Adults living with children are not at an increased risk of contracting the disease. In fact, the disease was attenuated in families with children. Children act as a brake on the disease. That's a massive study out of Germany. Transmission is typically from adult to child, not from child to adult. Schools in Sweden had no masking and they fared fine. There's no correlations between mask mandates and reduced spread of COVID in schools. And masks result in low oxygen saturation, and studies have found that carbon dioxide levels are above acceptable limits in children with prolonged mask use. A study reviewed data from 80% of US states which mandated masks during the pandemic and concluded that greater mask compliance did not correlate with lower growth rates of the virus. The study stated that mask mandates and use are not associated with lower COVID spread among US states. The university also found that prolonged mask use over four hours per day correlated with increased bacterial infection risk. Given a basically 0% fatality rate for children from COVID, the schools should not impose mask mandates on schoolchildren in the absence of true health risk to children without parental informed consent and without legislative authority or a valid executive order. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate those comments. Next card I have is Ms. Ginger Pop.
Good evening. Hope you remember me from last year. I still have the same stage fright. I'm on the countdown. I got in the parking lot and said, "I'm not going in. I'm not going in." My daughter called and said, "Are you speaking?" I said, "I don't think so." She said, "Oh." I said, "Do you want to wear a mask?" "No." I said, "Okay, I'm going in." So I hope you all have been well since I was last up here and haven't forgot how hard public speaking is for me. I did want to have a voice on the topic of mask mandates on our kiddos and hope that my comments are welcomed with an open mind and heart, as I only give them in the hopes of making a difference. I've been teaching my children ages 16 and 13 since birth. That voting is one of the most important rights, liberties, and outright American things that you can do. They have been in the voting booth with me since they were born. We all know that we have voiced our opinions or voted since grade school, from who wants Jell-O, who wants cookies, who wants paint, and who wants to color. We all know the choices get harder and harder and obviously more important the older we get. I am for not making our children wear a mask while in school. I am pro-choice for folks to decide if they want to wear one and if their children should wear one. And I do practice what I preach. What I do have concern about is the very thought that so many people go to college football games, concerts, church, and other large publicized gatherings with no mask, yet there may be the possibility of the board voting to mask our kiddos in Georgetown County. I would hope that everyone who voices their opinion, one way or another, lives by the very creed they may ask another to live under. If your vote to mask our children tonight, I hope that it is a stance you live by every day outside of school. The term "super-spreader" has been used far too long and holds little to no water anymore. I thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for what you do, and it's Taco Tuesday at the Pop House. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'm sorry, Ms. Pop. The next card I have is Patricia Smith, who wants to talk about an incident at Georgetown Middle School.
Hey, my name is Patricia Smith, and my son Rhett Smith was assaulted at Georgetown Middle School. I send my child to school to learn, however, he can't because of the bullying and humiliation he now faces. Administration is failing my child and many other children. My child was assaulted two times at Georgetown Middle School, 6th grade and now 7th grade. Learning is hard enough this year without him having to face that as well. Administration has had complaints of disruptive behavior, and they don't give the punishment that is deserved for this type of behavior. These kids know that nothing is being done, so they don't care. They know if they assault another child, the punishment is minimal. Three-day suspension for assault is a complete joke to me. They continue this behavior until someone is hurt. My son was beaten in his head and his face. He had knots on both sides of his head as big as lemons. His mouth was so busted open to the point his wires had to be replaced in his braces. Administration blamed him for not coming to them because he was being harassed about his potato chips. Really? Didn't seem important. Had he known he was going to be assaulted over his food, he would have gladly handed them over. He was also blamed for asking a girl a question. He never made a derogatory remark. He again was blamed for what happened because he stood up and looked to see who made a threatening comment to him. He never raised his hand. He never said a word. My child was told he was to blame, and he caused what happened to him. They even said he faced suspension or after-school detention. Absurd on their part. Mr. Hillman and Ms. Wilson do a poor job at your middle school. I am angry at the way this was handled, and someone needs to be held accountable for what has happened to my son. There are also videos of the incident, cyberbullying. It's happening now because of the kids videoing, several kids. I was also told by administration, they have no way of knowing who did that. Cyberbullying is also a crime. Don't we have a no-bullying policy? Don't our kids come first? What is happening to our system? I will not stand down. I will not stop until administration is held responsible for this. I hope there is an investigation. I hope and I will provide videos and also provide recordings of a meeting that was held with Mr. Hillman and Mrs. Wilson. I requested a meeting with them and two witnesses, two teachers that should have been at that meeting, and Mr. Hillman, he excused them from that meeting. People that were there for me to talk to that tried to help my child were dismissed, so I didn't get to ask them what they did for my child that was assaulted. I fear my child will not be safe at your school. I fear that the next time could be worse. There will not be a third time. Molly Spearman has been contacted. Molly Spearman has a copy of the video where my son was assaulted.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, your time is up. I see your neck. The next card I have is from Rhett, your son. So you can stand there while he comes up to speak to us.
Thank you for your time.
Come on up, Rhett.
Hey, my name is Rhett. I was assaulted at Georgetown Middle School, and I just wanted to tell y'all what I told Mr. Hillman and Ms. Wilson. Thank you. I wanted to be here today to voice my opinion. I was assaulted at your school for no reason. I should feel happy, healthy, and safe at school. I now fear violence, bullying, and humiliation. I was told that I was at fault for what happened to me. I was told that I provoked this to happen. I was told that I made a derogatory remark to someone and stood up, not saying anything and not raising my hands to anyone. I was told that I was the cause of being assaulted. I was assaulted because administration failed to protect me twice. Administration is at fault for what happened to me. My class is disruptive, disrespectful, and out of control. I'm not going to be punished or made to feel I did something to cause this.
And just as you, I sat him down to let him know what all these meanings were.
Yes, ma'am.
Assault and battery is the combination of two violent crimes. Derogatory remains showing a critical or disrespectful attitude. I did not have a disrespectful attitude. Negligence means failing to take proper care in doing something. Mr. Hillman and Ms. Wilson were negligent in protecting me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both very much for being here. Next card I have is from Shannon Hannan.
Good evening. I wish to start off by thanking those board members who took the time recently to read my recent emails and responded in kindness. I'm here as a parent who believes strongly in the right to make my own medical decisions regarding my child. We are far enough along in this pandemic to know that masking our kids for eight hours a day, five days a week, is hurting them physically and mentally. Last year, my 16-year-old son suffered from headaches, fatigue, and acne issues. His allergist suggested keeping him on his $180 a month inhaler due to the masks, and I also had to take him to a dermatologist because his mask acne was getting worse, and he was self-conscious. This year, with no mask mandate, we were able to take him off the expensive inhaler, and he has stopped his acne medicine as well. His mood has improved tremendously. A group of parents in Gainesville, Florida, sent off six masks to the University of Florida's Research and Education Center requesting analysis of contaminants found on them. They were freshly laundered or new cloth masks worn by five, worn for eight, five to eight hours, most during in-person schooling by kids aged 6 to 11. One was worn by an adult. A T-shirt worn by one of the students was sent in as a control object, along with an unworn mask. No pathogens were found on the control objects. However, five worn masks came back with bacteria, parasites, and fungi found on them, and three of them had very dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. I cannot pronounce most of the technical names for these, so I will just tell you what the real dangerous ones cause. They cause pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, sepsis, amoebic encephalitis, carotitis, E. coli, diphtheria, Legionnaires' disease, and a bacteria that causes UTIs that are resistant to antibiotics. The less dangerous pathogens found cause fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infections, strep throat, periodontal disease, Rocky Mountain spotted fever, and those are just a few of the ailments. Top German scientists have found that wearing certain types of face masks for long periods of times can result in potentially hazardous chemicals and microplastics being inhaled deeply into human lungs. One professor who ran a test on a used surgical mask found traces of carcinogen aniline, as well as formaldehyde and optical brighteners. Surgical masks were designed to be worn for very specific purposes in a hospital setting or for short periods of time before being discarded. I would be very wary of mandating masks, as some of these chemicals and fibers may have long-term effects and could open personal injury claims at some stage in the future. Before you make such a huge decision, I would encourage every board member to visit a school classroom and wear a mask for at least seven hours to see what our kids endure five days a week. Maybe even get your masks analyzed after to see what your health is potentially up against. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card I have is from Ms. Elena, Elena Hoff.
Hello. Hi, I'm Elena Hoff, and I'm a parent of a 5th grader at Wakema Intermediate School, and I'm just here to really encourage you all to just keep us as mask-free or parent choice. I think it's really important. I think once we lose parent-choice parents, we're not going to get it back. So it's really important for us to keep that choice. I don't discourage anybody who wants to mask or have their child mask. I, however, choose not to mask my child. He suffered from severe anxiety last year. He would come home and say how he couldn't breathe, how he felt like something was in his throat. When we were able to get those waivers last year and sign it, and I told him, "Buddy, you don't have to wear this mask anymore." He couldn't rip it off fast enough, and he cried. And I'm getting emotional about this because it's very near and dear to my heart, our freedoms, and I don't want to get political about it. This is not a political issue, because there's people on both sides of the aisle that have issues with this. So I just beg you to please keep Georgetown County parent-choice. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Russ Bodie is the next card I have.
Actually, Russ Bodie, longtime Georgetown County resident. We have three children that have gone through the Georgetown County School District here. God didn't give our children to the government, or to the school district, or even to our school administrators. He gave them to us parents. There's a very good parent sitting right here. She knows what's best for her child, and she's standing up for that. So I'm speaking to parents, and I'm speaking to board members here. And I would urge you, please don't rely on opinion. Please go directly to facts yourself. It takes extra time. It takes extra effort. I spend quite a bit of my time doing that. As an example, during the last board meeting, you had an expert from the, from the medical board and medical advisors board stand up and present the latest data on COVID and children. And I have that information here. I'm sure that you were given that information last time. Couple of points here from the facts. Severe disease among children is not increasing. Most importantly, the spike in hospitalizations, it doesn't really take any special degree to know this. You can see the spikes. It was identical to last year. The spike in hospitalization of children was identical to last year. There was no Delta variant last year. Look at the information yourself and make your own conclusions. So the facts don't support the conclusion of universal masking and universal vaccination. These are not opinions. These are facts. What if these measures aren't effective? What if they're not effective? Worse, what if the measures, these additional healthcare measures, are harmful? Why would the members of the board take the risk of mandating and coercing something, a healthcare practice that could potentially be harmful to people? If you read the facts, you may have a different opinion than others. And case in point, we now have Medicare and Medicaid data, and I'll provide this in an email. We know, without a doubt, from the facts of Medicare and Medicaid data, which is very detailed, that this is, by the way, 1/3 of all people in our country are under these programs. The majority of people with COVID are vaccinated, starting in April of 2021. As of now, 70% of people who have COVID are vaccinated, according to the facts of Medicare and Medicaid. People that were fully vaccinated in April are 2 and 1/2 times more likely to get COVID than people who are unvaccinated.
Mr. Bodie, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is from Ms. Sylvia Bauer.
Thank you. I'm a parent. I have two children in our schools. I would like to talk about masks. South Carolina Department of Education didn't really want to mandate them again, so you were graced with making this decision. I think just as our education department passed this decision down to you, it would be wise for you to pass this medical decision down to us, parents. I did a fact and data-based presentation for you back in May. You're welcome to go back to it anytime. What I said back then still stands. The science is simply not there to support wearing masks. We still don't have any proof that unmasked children infect masked children, or anybody in that matter. We don't have studies to prove masks protect from catching COVID. We don't have studies proving masks are safe for every child to wear for many hours. We do know that a mask on your face will not stop the transmission of the virus. The virus goes right through it. The CDC said that on their website, February 27, 2020. Then later on, many studies followed, confirming this. Even mask manufacturers state this fact. Your health does not come from a piece of cloth on your face. Your health comes from what's within you. Everyone is going to struggle. However, the beauty of freedom is that everyone gets to choose their struggle. With your health, you either struggle with discipline or with disease. It's your choice. The problem arises when this choice is removed by fear. Every individual needs to take responsibility for their own health. Please do not delegate this responsibility to our children. Masks are harmful to children on many levels. I talked about it back in May. I will add that the group of parents sent, Shannon was talking about it, so I'll skip that. But the results were horrifying. They found multiple strains of bacteria, fungi. We know that wearing cloth masks makes us more susceptible to getting sick. We do not want those petri dishes on our kids' faces. Making masks mandatory again will only serve further division in our community. We need to have freedom to choose which medical decisions are right for our own children without the threat of them losing access to in-person education. Medical mandates do not belong in a free society. We are free people, and it doesn't matter what side of the bridge we live on. We are one community, and we need to respect each other and each other's choices. Let's begin to heal the divide. Let's not deepen it. If you feel a mask will help you be healthy, you can wear a mask. But please, do not try to force your medical views on us, and do not tell us we have to put them on our kids. We are asking you to leave medical decisions to parents. Do not mandate masks on our children again.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next card I have is from Ms. Brenda Presley.
Good evening. I don't have any children in the school system now, but I am a concerned citizen, and I would like to ask you guys to respect the parents, because I know what it would feel like if I were, if I did have children in the school system right now. I don't want to be made to wear a mask. I went to the county council meeting to, back whatever month that was, to request, you know, that we wouldn't have to wear them. Too many studies have shown that they just really don't produce the results that people are telling us that they do. If you do look at some of the evidence, it's there. And I have two grown daughters. They have to wear them just because of their jobs, and they talk about how miserable they are and how, you know, they just feel like they can't catch their breath. And I work with children, and, you know, a lot of our expression obviously is in our mouth. And I think that it's an emotional thing for them, too. Like, one of the moms said that her little boy just cried when he realized he didn't have to wear them anymore. I think it's important that parents get to choose, and too many things are trying to be mandated right now, and I'm very concerned for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Next card I have is from Ebony Hughes.
I was waiting for the time. Good evening. My name is Ebony Hughes, and I am speaking about the mask mandates and about choice. We've, I think already we've given choice to everyone. We've sent out a survey asking parents whether or not we should keep Plexiglas or not. They've sent out different surveys asking about choice, and we've given choice, and many have been removed. Children and adults in schools cannot be properly socially distanced at this point with everyone back in school at the same time. Those with underlying health conditions do not have a choice. 53% of staff and staff members and teachers have underlying health conditions. Similar to adults, children with obesity, diabetes, asthma, or chronic lung diseases, sickle cell, which affects the African-American community, or immunizations that are compromised, also have an increased risk of severe illnesses from COVID-19. The science of the mask is that masks protect each other. So long as we have a choice, masks will never work right. That's the truth. It doesn't work if everyone does not wear them. For example, if I have COVID, I can spread it to anyone in here because I don't have a way or a barrier in between me and someone else. The masks reduce the transmission of the disease, so why take a chance? People with a disability or underlying health conditions don't have a choice of who they sit next to. Should they be isolated while everyone else, who may be able to fight the disease off, be able to have that choice that they don't? We should at least try. Quarantine interrupts learning. Quarantine rates have gone down, in my opinion, because we are doing less contact tracing and we are doing less testing. Obviously, the numbers would go down. Schools should set the tone and be the leaders of showing us how to look out for our fellow man and for each other. That's what masks show. I am speaking for teachers who cannot speak openly because of possible retaliation and adhering to their contracts. Teachers are leaving left and right because things have become political instead of scientific. This isn't only a child issue. This is also an issue for the people that teach the children. A lot of this has had a lot of pushback, but we need to show our children that we can fight through unprecedented time. And instead of pushing back against policy and science, which we teach in schools, we need to, need to be able to show them how to overcome it and look out for each other. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. We appreciate your input. Next card I have is Mr. Tom. And I know I'm going to butcher this. I apologize. All Genesac. Am I close? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a little nervous. I'm not a public speaker, but this is my first time at a school board meeting. I have two children in the Georgetown County Public Schools, and I have And I have two concerns this evening. One is the mask mandate, and I concur with what the majority has spoken up here this evening. I won't go on and belabor it too much, because it's already been said, but I do feel that there are risks associated with wearing masks. And I do feel like the decisions should be left up to the parents. And I would like to offer a possible solution. Most of the schools in Georgetown County have multiple classes for the same grade. So if it were possible to separate those who wanted to be in a masked situation from those who don't want their children to be forced to wear a mask, that may be a possible solution, where we could separate the classes to the maskers and the non-maskers. So I hope that helps you make a decision. Also, I wanted to mention, I have a daughter in the fourth grade at Coastal Montessori, and I have a son at McDonald Elementary. He's only four years old, and he's in pre-K. And McDonald School shut down once because of the COVID cases, and, you know, obviously, my son couldn't go to school. And, you know, he's early on, so it's probably not affecting him as much as it's affecting my daughter. But my daughter is, she's about to turn 10, and we're about, what, a month and a half into the school year now, and my daughter's been quarantined twice. She's never tested positive or never shown any symptoms of COVID. And we got a recent report card where she's slipping in some of her grades. And the mandates and the whole COVID situation has been going on for, you know, a year and a half now. We've been, you know, my kids have been good sports. My daughter's been a good sport all along about it, but it's difficult on her, and her learning is suffering. She's been quarantined twice, and this is the second time this school year. So out of a month and a half, you know, she's missed a good bit of school already. And, you know, I don't want to offend anybody, but I feel like we need to make some accommodations. We might need to look at our quarantine process a little closer, because every time somebody tests positive in her class, she was wearing a mask as well. She's still allowed to quarantine, and now she's missing out on that opportunity to learn, and her grades are suffering because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Next card I have is Mr. David Ellison.
I count that two of eight of you fine people are wearing a mask, and that's a personal decision. But the great thing about it is, is, you know, at least six of you, if I do my math, really, are not wearing a mask. So I expect all six of you to do what? Vote for parental masking choice, because you have a choice, right? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And for those that choose to wear a mask, that's a personal, God-given decision. Thank you for your choice. So it would be kind of hypocritical, if you're not wearing a mask, to vote to make my child wear a mask. Can I get somebody, can I get an amen out there? All right. Thank you, Jesus. The Good Book says that we shouldn't prohibit or prevent the little children to come unto the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen? It's okay to say Jesus in a public school environment, right? You're not going to shout me down. But the thing about it is, is when you ask teachers what the number-one thing is that causes the success of a child in school, what is the number-one indicator? What is it? It's parental involvement. Can I get an amen? This is parental involvement. This is what America is all about. But guess what I read? I read on the news the other day, I got a letter addressed to President Joe Biden. And what does it say? It says, "From the National School Board Association." And it's kicking, I'm assuming that you guys are part of that. Amen? Maybe not. Hopefully not. But this says that if you assemble peacefully, and you come in and you want to talk about how bad masks are, there's no science for them. This letter to Joe Biden wants to send the FBI and investigate parents like us. I say that's a big foul. Can I get an amen? That's a big foul. Because guess what? These parents are not terrorists. I'm not a terrorist. I'm a retired military officer. And it's offensive for your lobby group to consider me a terrorist. Next, 95%. I got a minute left. 95. It's interesting that we used to have seven minutes, now we've got three minutes. 95% of the people in the school district are not wearing masks. If you take a poll, 95, and 95% of disabled, precious disabled kids are not wearing masks. And I dare say that their parents don't want them wearing masks. So this idea that we're protecting disabled kids when 90 to 95% aren't wearing masks, that flies in the face of reason. This particular mask container, made in China, says, and containers like this, say something about, "This mask can only be used to protect against pollutants like dusk, for not medical use." It also says that these masks don't prevent virus. They don't prevent the spread of virus. So it's either, you know, incompetence or unscientific to think that masks work. Masks do not work. And the lady said it, the parent said it, it was on the CDC website. So let me say this, I do have a solution. My solution is parental mask choice. And if we don't go to parental mask choice, then we're going to have to have classrooms or schools that have maskers and unmaskers. And that's called segregation.
Thank you, sir.
And that never works. Amen?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. The last card I have is from Ms. Julie Honeycutt.
Thank you for allowing us to come and meet with you and speak. I am for parent choice. I am also about the health of the children. Brown University has a study that proved in younger children IQ drops due to the mask use. Children learn from facial expressions from parents, teachers, and their peers. So when you take that ability away from the children, you're taking away their ability to learn. Masks are useful for water droplets, like Ebola, or in a surgical setting for spit landing on a surgical site. COVID is transmitted through aerosolized particles, which pretty much render the mask useless unless you've been fitted for an N95, which is a big process where they have to actually aerosolize a bag that's, or thing that goes over your head. And if you're able to smell, then it's not fitted right, and they have to keep trying. That's what they use in the medical facilities to keep that. So I just, you know, when painters, miners, people with pesticides, they're wearing massive, what do you want to say? Masks, you know, that are used for that, to keep those aerosolized particles out. So for us to think that a little piece of cotton that is not fitted properly, that kids are taking and putting in their bookbag, they're putting it on the counter, they're putting it in the bathroom, it's, are we actually increasing their ability to catch something worse or spread throughout the school? So just really think that there's a lot of things that we can do to keep our children safe, and I'm not sure that masks are the ultimate end-all for keeping them safe. I am all for them washing their hands six feet apart and maintaining safe practices, like we do at home. If you're sick, you stay home. You stay home until you don't have a fever or whatnot. But something I just saw the other day, and I'll just end with this. The freedoms we surrender today are the freedoms our grandchildren will never know existed. So I just think we need to be very cautious on this slippery slope of protecting our freedoms of choice, which is the American way. And I thank you for taking the time with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Appreciate that. That was our last public comment, so we'll move on now to approval of the minutes. In your packet, you received a copy of the minutes from our meeting of September 21, 21. Unless there are any additions or corrections to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the minutes from our meeting of September 21, 21? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The minutes have been approved. Next up is adoption of the agenda that you've had a chance to look over. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the agenda for this evening as presented? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The agenda has been approved. The first action item is the personnel list. It's rather small, and the administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the personnel list as presented? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Certainly, you may.
Has nothing to do with the personnel list. I just want to know how many teachers we are missing in the classroom.
Mr. Jenkins? I'm sure you can answer that.
Not because of COVID, but just...
Just in general.
That has not been assigned a class.
Good evening, everyone. We did start the year fully staffed, but we have had several resignations. And right now, we have six positions that still need to be filled.
Can you tell me what they are?
Not right off the top of my head, but I do have a presentation that I'm going to share with Mr. Price, and so at the next board meeting, I'll be able to give it to you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the personnel list as presented? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The personnel list has been approved. A surplus property vehicle sale is our next action item. See Ms. Johnson coming forward. She's not Ms. Ackerman, she's Ms. Johnson.
No, sir. Ms. Ackerman's under the weather tonight. We are asking that you approve for us to conduct a surplus property sale in accordance with Board Policy DN and Article 15 of the District's Procurement Code, specifically for the vehicles identified below as presented. The sale will be conducted by means of an electronic auction through GovDeals and sold to the highest bidder. There are two mini buses that are very old and have a lot of miles on them, and we're asking that we be allowed to dispose of those through GovDeals.
Any questions from Ms. Johnson? The administration recommends approval to conduct a surplus property sale in accordance with Board Policy DN and Article 15 of the District's Procurement Code, specifically for the vehicles identified below as presented. The sale will be conducted by means of an electronic auction through GovDeals and sold to the highest bidder. Do I hear a motion to approve the sales?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the surplus property vehicle sales? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's been approved. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next action item is Administrative Rule GDF, Support Staff Hiring. Ms. Lindsay Ann Thompson. She's got the next four items.
Yes, and I'll try to be brief. Good evening, Chairman Dom, members of the board, Mr. Price. The first policy that we have is GDF, Support Staff Hiring. And this is a very simple request for a change. Ms. Milton pointed this out, that we had never stated in our policy that we needed, if you have a GED, for it to come from an accredited institution, rather than a non-accredited institution. And that's all that we're seeking to change here, is just add the word accredited institution, and then make sure that in the second part of the sentence, it matches up and says that a high school diploma or a GED is acceptable. And that is the only change that we're asking for.
Any questions from Ms. Thompson? The administration recommends first reading approval of revisions to Policy GDF, Support Staff Hiring, as presented. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the administrative rule change? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Dom?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, most people don't know what GED stands for.
Tell us.
It doesn't stand for Graduate Equivalency Degree, General Education Development. And I wish we would put that in there in parentheses, please.
Yes, sir. I went to look that up myself recently, and it's my understanding that the original makers of the GED have dropped it as an acronym, and that it does no longer stands for the letters G-E and D, and they just use the term GED. Have you seen something more recent? Because I was confused about that myself.
No, I have not, and you may be right. And I'll tell you why. Because the SAT, some people even today say Scholastic Aptitude Test or what have it, and that is just an acronym as well. Same thing with ACT. That used to be American College Testing. So you may be right on this one. You may be right.
I think, because when I went to look it up, sir, I think, with all due respect, because it was confusing to me as well, to find out exactly what GED was standing for, because I didn't want to use an acronym in the policy, but I believe it's been dropped as an acronym, and it's just now the term GED.
Okay. Well, give me a minute to wipe the egg off my face. Thank you.
No, sir. Not at all. Not at all. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All those in favor of the administrative rule change, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's been approved. Next is revision to Policy IHA, the grading system.
Yes, sir. This is a second reading approval, and as we discussed at the last meeting, this is simply to bring our policy in line, A, with our practices, and B, with the state uniform grading policy. So we have copied and pasted from the model policy put forth by the School Boards Association when the uniform grading policy came out, and incorporated some of our specific language in places where we could do so from our old policy.
Any questions on this? All right. The administration recommends second and final reading approval of revisions to Policy IHA, the grading system, as presented. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the revisions? This is the final reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's been approved. Revisions to Policy IGCC, the honors program.
Also, just a simple revision to bring it in line with the state uniform grading policy. Just that addition that you can't use PE1 or any substitute for PE1 to receive honors weight.
Any questions on this one? Administration recommends second and final reading approval of revisions to Policy IGCC, honors program, as presented. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the revisions? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's been approved. Last one from Ms. Thompson and Ms. Smith, if she wants to join in, is revision to Policy GA, the district staffing plan.
Yes, sir. This is, of course, the second reading for the district staffing plan. Last meeting, you all voted to rescind our administrative rule that had the specific staffing formulas in it. And as part of that, we are matching the language of the state regulation that talks about the class sizes. And I know that last time we discussed that during the budget process, we would bring forth specific class ratios, student-teacher ratios, for your review as part of the budget planning and planning process for the upcoming school year. So this is just to shore up that process and put a boat on it, basically.
Any questions on this? The administration recommends second and final reading approval of revisions to Policy GA, district staffing plan, as presented. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we approve the revisions to Policy GA? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's been approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
What we've all been waiting for, possible revisions to Georgetown County School District's Safe Return to In-Person Learning Instruction and Continuity of Operations Plan. Mr. Walters.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Mr. Price. And yes, we are before you tonight with some information for your consideration. This would be part of the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Operations Plan, which you remember, any revisions to it would need a board vote, and then we have to submit the revised plan back to the State Department of Education. So, and of course, the topic for consideration as part of that plan tonight on the next slide is face coverings. And we can go right on to the next one. And so this is where we are right now, is that our policy is face coverings are recommended and encouraged, but they are not required or mandatory in school facilities, which does comply with Proviso 1.108. Now, face coverings are required on state-owned buses, because, as you all know, the State Department of Education owns the buses, and it was their directive back in August that they would enforce the CDC order from January of this year. So that's where we are as of right now. So first, I want to start off and give you some updates on some numbers. This is the students in isolation. That means that there's been a positive test involved. You can see where we were around the 1st of September. You can see where we were around the 1st of September. Those first couple of days where it really peaked, we were over 250. And this is just students, not staff. You can see toward the end of the month there, where it dropped down to around 50. And I'm happy to report, as of today, actually, that number is 37. And then also, as another point of reference, that number of 37, Nurse McCall and her nursing staff, who you all know do a phenomenal job every day anyway with what they're working within the schools, but they also compile daily reports for us, so we can track these numbers, and they also include a percentage. And so as a percentage of student population, today's number of 37 is .47 percent, a little less than half a percent. If we can go to the next slide, please, and this is a number in quarantine. You can see this. It's a very similar graphic to what we just saw. Back toward the 1st of September, we peaked out at well over, a little over 2,500. It dropped down toward the end of the month to about a little over 200. Today's number is 176, and that equates to 2.23 percent of our student population. That's where we are with students in quarantine today. And of course, you've recalled that we adopted the less restrictive quarantine measures, provided that certain criteria were met to do that when we last met. So here we are back with Proviso 1.108. Just as a reminder, that it was part of the state budget that was passed this year, and it was very specific, not only to enforcement of a face mask policy, but even the announcement of a face mask policy. And so that's what led to our current status, as we just mentioned. So we can go on to the next one. So the ACLU filed a lawsuit back in August on behalf of some disabilities rights groups. They named Governor McMaster, Attorney General Wilson, Superintendent Spearman, and seven school districts. And their allegation was that mask mandates disproportionately affect students with underlying health conditions and disabilities that make them susceptible to illness. And they asked for temporary restraining order and preliminary injunction from preventing the enforcement of that proviso. So on September 28th, the ruling came down from the U.S. District Court, and it grants the temporary restraining order and preliminary injunction. It's also significant to note, it denied the state Attorney General's motion to dismiss. Now, it's important to remember that the terms temporary and preliminary are used in these orders. That's because the case will still go through the court process, and conceivably, it could have a different outcome, which it actually goes to trial, if it actually goes to trial. But that's where it is right now. And so the governor and Attorney General Wilson both have filed an appeal with the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals in Richmond to stop this from going forward. We have not heard anything on that. Of course, we monitor every day for updates on it. So the State Department of Education issued their response to it, and they specifically stated that the state and local school districts are prohibited from enforcing Proviso 1.108, and that school districts have discretionary authority for masks. And also emphasized, and this is important, consulting with legal counsel on actionable steps to make reasonable accommodations for students with disabilities. Well, this is something we do every day anyway. I don't know if it was more of a reminder, but we do this every day. Okay? Now, you'll remember that Richland 2 filed a lawsuit, and they named Speaker Lucas, Senate President Peeler, Superintendent Spearman. And the State Supreme Court heard this case in its original jurisdiction. In other words, they just bypassed everybody and took it up. And so what Richland 2 and the plaintiffs were asking was to have not only proviso about masks, but also the one that kept the virtual programs at 5% declared invalid. And they came back with a ruling, we can go on to the next slide on the 30th, and they upheld the provisos prohibiting specifically about using state funds appropriated in the state budget to enforce a mask mandate. But they were very specific that they did not reject the possibility that other funds could be used to do so. However, they declined to give any guidance on how you could do that. So the State Department came out later that same day and just reinforced the fact that they said the guidance that they provided earlier is still the guidance for us to use, that the district courts order and federal courts not affected or controlled by the State Supreme Court. There are different cases, different causes of action, different facts. And because the federal one says that the proviso violates ADA and the Rehabilitation Act, that, and again, very specific, state and local school districts are prohibited from enforcing that proviso, and districts remain the discretionary authority to require masks. So what we've done tonight is, you noticed in the agenda, is not the district administration recommendations. These are some possible options for your consideration. You could take any one you wish. You can discard all of them, come up with your own. This is just some things for your consideration. The first one would be continuing with our current policy that we had in that earlier slide, until or unless a point that you deem that a change is needed. Now, we posed this set of options to our medical advisory team, and they provided us with some responses, and they support this option of continuing with the current course. They cited the graphics that we provided about the fewer cases, positive cases. They said that the ones they are seeing now seem to have milder symptoms. They feel like communication and mental health aspects are a factor in that determination they're making. And then they also said, though, that we may need to revisit it if there's another spike, like we saw a month ago. And they, a couple of them are very specific, saying, "If you had asked us this question the first week of September as opposed to first week of October, we likely would not give you the same answer." So they cautioned us to be careful in continuing to closely monitor, as we do, what the conditions are like. Now, another option would be, if you want to implement a face covering policy, doing it at all locations at all times, until you decide to repeal it or otherwise modify it. You could also do a version, the third bullet point there, where you would do the same thing, all locations, but it would have a set period of time, 30 days, 60 days, unless you decide to extend it, or you could repeal it at an earlier date. Again, all those things are within your discretion. And then another option would be, if you wanted to have one on a school level that would be triggered by some statistic, like a set number of isolation percentages or quarantine percentages that you feel that would warrant doing that on a school-level basis. Now, when we go to the next slide, if you were to go with one of the options that would make masks mandatory as opposed to the current policy, you did pass a resolution that gives the superintendent the authority to take action outside of the board meeting. It did specify requirements for masks and other protective equipment, but if he were to ever use that authority, he would have to bring it to you as a next meeting for discussion or an action item, the soonest available meeting. So there is some flexibility if there's a sudden spike or an issue or something that can take immediate action. Certainly, you always have the option to call an emergency board meeting as well. So again, just laying out all of the options for you. So, but to go on to the next one here, if you were to actually adopt some sort of mandatory... If we can go on to the next one. There we go. Mandatory-type policy, then the question of enforcement would come up. And this has come up already with face coverings on buses. And if you recall, the State Department sent out guidance saying that you must have a disciplinary action policy to enforce that for buses. It involves verbal warnings, written warnings, suspending from riding the bus if it's a continuous situation. If somebody, if you had this policy in place, if you implement the... We would use the discipline policy. It could be a Level 1 offense for failing to follow instructions. It could be a Level 2 offense if you get into defiance or other circumstances would escalate beyond that. But the disciplinary policy we have in place would cover that. If it resulted in an out-of-school suspension, those students would not be eligible for virtual or for mode or dual modality instruction, some other form of instruction. It would be the same as if they had gotten suspended from school for misbehavior or misconduct. And then the other thing that would be a potential consideration would be if there was one in place, is if there was requests from people in the virtual program to come back into in-person instruction. Certainly, that's something that could be considered. But all of that would be a supposition based on what action, if any, that you take tonight. And then, this time, we would end with this slide. Usually, we do it a little earlier in the presentation, but our plan remains adaptive. Keeping schools safe and open is our top priority, and we try to make our decisions based on science and circumstances. And so with that, that's the overview of the information we have to present for you tonight. I'm happy, along with other members of our team, who we've all worked collaboratively on this presentation for you, we'll try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I'd like to open it up to board discussion and input. And I was interested, and I'll start by saying, I was interested to hear what our medical advisory team recommended, because that was one of the questions I was going to ask, and they recommend we keep it the way it is right now, correct?
Yes, sir. We shared with them. I shared the charts with them, I showed you. And we gave them that same list of options for their consideration, or we told them, "If you think we're asking the wrong questions or providing the wrong options for the board, if there's something different..." They didn't see anything different, and they all were, like I said, in agreement that right now, under our current conditions, the current policy in place seems to be working, so there's not a need to change it.
And either you or Mr. Price can answer, you know, what is our input from principals? How do they feel? Because I know one thing, teachers, many teachers that contact me are very concerned about their own welfare, their family's welfare. So I'd like to hear what schools have to say.
Sure thing. We had an impromptu virtual meeting, pulled all of our principals together last week after the district court's ruling was made public. And I wanted to ask them their thoughts, their reactions to it, and what were their thoughts about enforcement if a mask policy were put in place? And really, a lot of their comments were kind of echoed in Mr. Walters' presentation tonight. I believe he was, he was a part of that meeting. He tuned in while we were all having the discussion. And I believe the comments kind of went along the path was, you know, if we were considering this a month ago, I think there would be, there would have been a unanimous approval to put a mask mandate in place. At that point, we were nearly 2,600 students in quarantine, and as of today, we were, we were under 200. We're in a very different place now than we were a month ago. And it's because of more people getting vaccinated, more, all of the hard work from our nurses doing contact tracing. We've modified our quarantine protocols based on recommendations from medical professionals. We tried to be responsive and put all those mitigation strategies in place. And as the conditions have improved, our principals feel like we're focusing more on teaching and learning. And a shift in that would mean that we would have to turn our attention to mask enforcement. And the thought about possibly withholding students from learning because of their stance on a mask issue was somewhat concerning. They, you know, they recognize the importance, but at the same time, if our numbers were trending in a different direction or not improving the way that they were, that they may have had a different opinion about that. But also, similar to what the medical panel said, there's a possibility that we could have another spike. There's a possibility that another variant could come along. The reassuring point is that now that we have this ability to reconsider that, that's comforting to know that if, if conditions worsen, we would have the ability and the flexibility to put something in place for a designated amount of time or for a period of time. And they even said, you know, when we were making decisions about when to move a school into temporary virtual status, and we had to move seven of our schools into temporary virtual status for a designated period of time, that that was done looking at internal data on a class-by-class, school-by-school decision. And they even said, "What if we adopted that same thought process towards masks, that if a classroom has an outbreak or a school has an outbreak, that perhaps that could be considered rather than making a district-wide decision?" So it was unfiltered, open, and honest discussion. There were comments made on both sides, but in general, the comments that I shared with you tonight were what our principals shared with us. And so I appreciate you asking that question, because I do value their opinions and their thoughts. They're on the front lines. They're working with parents, students, and staff, all at the same time, trying to be accommodating to all and considerate of everyone's opinion. Everyone's opinion on this is important. But just like we have seen throughout this whole entire ordeal, oftentimes, everyone's opinion does not align. And it's, it's critical to keep all of that in mind and to be compassionate and sensitive as we go through this journey together.
Other input questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for the new quarantine. That, I've had several parents contact me and said they were tickled to death that the children were able to have their tests done on the fifth day and come back to school on the seventh day, rather than be out 10 or 14 days. And so the parents really appreciate that. I just want you to know that. Second, I am a nurse, and I'm a teacher. And I hear parents talk about they did research. Well, I've spent the whole weekend doing research. And I'm really surprised what I found. Cloth masks that our children wear are to be washed daily in hot water and soap to make them effective. They are only effective when you take them out brand-new, 26.5 percent. And that's a triple layer, and this is my granddaughter's, and it's only a double layer. And it should also have something in it to protect the, your respirations or the water getting on the inside of the mask. Every day that you do not wash it in hot and soapy water and put it on, the percentage is 3 percent. So if it's 26.5, and at the end of five days, we're talking about 11.5 percent effective. Okay. Because it's not just the thickness, it's the moisture on the inside. And that's, this is the one that's only one layer, and it was given to me at one of our schools. Okay? The mask, this right here, it is effective 71 percent, which is good. It has to be have the little metal clip. The thing is, when it gets moist inside, if you look at the hospitals, every time it gets moist inside, it allows those little viruses to come through. And so every time it gets moist, it should be thrown away like they do in the hospital, and you put on a new one. You don't wear it for a week or two or three days. And we, I've talked to you about what I've seen people do, pull them out of the trunk of their car. This is an N95, and it is 98.4 percent effective. But every time it gets moist inside, it drops the effectiveness. And if it's really moist, and you're using it when you're really hot, then you're supposed to throw it away and get a new one. The one that did surprise me, this is called a buff. And I took it for my son. I have to return it. It was 47 percent effective. I see kids with them around their neck and pull them up, and I go, "That can't be anything." But that too, when it becomes moist, then it really does not protect at all. And so I want us to think about letting the parents know. They think just because they pull out a mask, that's my granddaughter's, and slap it on them, that they're good to go, and they're not good to go. So if we're counting on the mask to stop or to help prevent this cloth mask that's not washed daily in hot water and soap is not going to protect your child. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Dom?
Other input? Yes, sir.
When the medical professionals met with y'all, did, did they give any data about the increase or decrease or remaining the same of vaccinations?
So we didn't have a virtual meeting this time. We couldn't get everybody together in the timeframe that was allowable, so we did an email discussion thread with it. What they have told us, though, is that they have seen an increase in vaccinations. They also saw an increase in people bringing their kids in for testing so they could take... take advantage of the shorter quarantine periods, and that they've seen the ones who have tested positive have milder symptoms.
And, and Mr. Price, the vaccination incentive program, you know, you gave a very nice discussion about the, you know, the teachers' input and so forth. How, how does that look? Did you see an increase? Are people signing up for it?
To be honest with you, that, that window hasn't closed yet, and I've tried to stay out of it, because that, the collection of that information was purely for the granting of the incentive. So I haven't looked at the numbers that have come in or anything like that, to be honest with you, so I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay, because specifically, I'm not asking for, you know, individual information.
Right.
I'm asking just for numbers.
Yes.
How many?
I don't have that number.
Okay.
For you tonight, I'm sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I can tell you that when we even considered the virtual option, that many parents chose that, and that changed, because our numbers went down dramatically. I, I would assume that had an impact on that. And had you come to us at the earlier stage of this pandemic this fall, I'd have never thought we'd have been there, but I certainly would have considered any mitigating circumstances that would have kept our children in school. But as of now, with the numbers and the children that we have, the very few of our students who are showing that they're positive, and our lack of quarantine numbers and lack of the number of students and staff that are out of schools, our policy now, if we keep it like it is, do we have to re-vote on that, or do we just leave our plan like it is tonight?
My understanding, Ms. Hamel, is you would not, because we're not changing the plan, if you stick with the current course of action. Anything that would change the plan is what would require a vote and a resubmission. I think Mr. Price might want to elaborate on that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Walters, but the one part of our plan that would need to be modified is the reference to proviso 1.108, because anything referencing that needs to be removed from the plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, and that was from the State Department, that that needed to be taken out.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Any?
I just want to add, Mr. Chairman, I too, along with Ms. Hamel and other, other comments that have been made, had we have been having this conversation a couple of months ago, my, my thoughts were much different. Now, when I think about it, and I've been thinking about it since our last board meeting, I think about not just how much I don't like wearing these, you know, I wear it because, you know, I follow rules, and if it says it's recommended or you go into a building, I do it out of respect. But I also realize that now, again, there's so many mental health impacts of wearing the mask, there's so many negatives, I'm thinking that it, it kind of outweighs the positives. One of the things that has been positive, and I think I have to, I have to applaud parents, I think parents have been more diligent, maybe because they don't want us to have to wear the mask, but they've been more diligent in having their kids do what's necessary, hand washing, social distance, et cetera. I applaud the teachers and the staff for, for doing their part in keeping our students safe. And if, and I think all of that, including the vaccinations, more people in the county getting vaccinated, I think all that has been attributed to our low numbers. And so with that, I would say to keep the policy as it is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to thank, I, my grandchildren go to Kensington, and I'm not sure about the older grades, but kindergarten, they've gotten really wise, they've broken the children up in groups of four. Everything they do is in groups of four, and so when one of the children came down with COVID, four children had to go home quarantined, only four, not the class of 24. And so I was just really impressed when I found out that the administration had divided them up, and I think, I'm not sure about grades one through five, but the fact that only four children went home for 10 days, it was great.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that order is just temporary, just say for the sake of argument that there was, there was a vote to have a mandate, it would just be overturned if that court order reversed itself, correct?
It could be overturned at trial, it also could be overturned, the temporary part could be overturned by the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. If that were to happen, that in turn could be appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court. So that would be the ultimate decision right there, so it's, there's a process involved, and it's not going to be a really fast one.
Right. Thank you.
If it, if it happens that it got to the Fourth Circuit, strikeout, it, they will kill the appeals. Fourth Circuit is one of the most, quote, Fourth Circuit is one of the, quote, most conservative, uh, jurisprudence in the state. I think that's in Virginia somewhere, but if it gets there, we want that a chance. They're, they're going to strike down the bank. I can feel it in my soul, and based upon a history over the years that I've followed it, no, no. Okay. I don't know if anybody understood what I said, but if ever, you know, it's...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and if, if they were to do that...
...to get by.
Again, we'd still be back at square one, where the case goes to trial, and of course, then when you have the trial, somebody can appeal the verdict of the trial, and...
Mm-hmm. It's going to be a long...
Goes on and on.
Right.
So I think, Mr. Dumb, to get back to the earlier question, and Ms. Thompson can help me if I misspeak, if the board's choice is to keep the current course of action, we still would need a vote on that, just including the motion to eliminate references to proviso 1.108.
One other, one other quick question. The one that we're about to vote on, you know, to sort of let things stay as they are.
All right, could you back up, slow it up a little?
Does the superintendent have the ability to move without us? If, if, if something is going on quickly, we may not...
If you can back up like two slides here to the board resolution?
Now, I just want to make sure he, he has the power without running us down again.
So, when you voted earlier, a few weeks ago, you gave him the authority to take action pursuant to policy BFE, to make these changes, and in that resolution, it specifically said mask in it. However, if he does that, he's got to bring it to you at your next meeting, whether it's regularly scheduled meeting, or, you know, you always have the option to, to call a meeting.
Right. It sounds to me as though the consensus is we're going to continue with the current policy, with the understanding that should things spike, should things go back to the way that they were, then, then we could call an emergency meeting and adjust things as needed, as recommended.
Yes, sir.
So what we need this evening is a motion to continue with the policies, and tell me again about proviso 108?
To continue with the current policy of, can you back the slide up?
Do you want to make the motion, Ms. Thompson? Can you come and make the motion for us, so that we're very clear?
Yes, sir, and I was writing as, as you were just speaking, so this may not, may not be perfect, but I think you could move that we can, that, that the only change that the district makes to its current policy regarding mask, to face masks, is to strike any reference to proviso 1.18 in the current operating plan, unless and until we, as the board, determine a change is needed.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions?
No, I just want to make it perfectly clear that no one is forcing anyone to wear a mask. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
Our policy will still remain encourage and recommend, but not mandatory or required.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to make this comment, since the fact that I was wearing a mask had nothing to do with, I don't want to give anybody any interpretation. I have issues. I have an immune compromise position, which means if you come to visit our friends in Dunbar, you can't come in my house without a mask. I'll meet you on the outside, but you will not get in.
Any other further discussion?
I had to put that out.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion has been approved. Thank you all very much. The last action item is certification of delegates for the 2021 delegate assembly. That will be held on Saturday, December 4th, in conjunction with the South Carolina School Board's annual business meeting. We have to appoint three voting delegates and three alternate delegates. Do I have any volunteers to serve as a delegate?
No, but I'd like to nominate, Randy, you, you going to say something, sir?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can we, Mr. Chair, can we nominate someone?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Lynn Ford, for two reasons. One, she has very good judgment, and secondly, she is the secretary of the board.
All right. Lynn, do you agree to, you're attending the...
Yes.
And you agree to be a delegate? All right, there's one. We need two more.
I'll apologize to be an alternate.
All right, Ms. Deleon will be an alternate.
No, no, I have to have three.
Maybe somebody else would like to.
You agree to be a delegate?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
We need one more delegate.
Can we nominate somebody that's not here?
Sure.
Then I nominate Mr. Gaskins.
Yep, I know Bill's going, so he'll be a delegate, whether he likes it or not.
That's what I...
That's the problem. And Mr. Gaskins is not here because he had a knee replacement that went very well for him. I'll be happy to be an alternate. We need one more alternate.
I'm always good as an alternate.
All right, so we could, we got it covered. All right.
He can kiss him.
Do I hear a motion to approve those six individuals, Ms. Ford, Dr. Caffaro, Mr. Gaskins as delegates, Ms. Deleon, Dr. Lance and myself as alternates? Do I hear a motion to approve those six people?
So moved.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's been approved. Thank you very much. We will now move on to information items. The first up is Phase III overview of the Bond Program overview in a 10-year facility study, Mr. Bill Cram and Mr. Bob Sabiri from MBCon Construction Company. There you go.
Good evening. On behalf of MBCon, I want to thank you for allowing us to bring this update to you, Chairman Dumb, Superintendent Price, members of the board and administration. Preparing for this presentation meeting tonight, I had several meetings with Superintendent Price, and several of the things stood out to me that we discussed. One of them was, he mentioned four core values, learning, character, community and relationships. A second one was, I guess more or less a mission statement, prepare every student for success in their chosen pathway, and certainly, good facilities support both of those and are essential to that. So a little history, back in 2016, MBCon was selected to perform a very detailed, comprehensive facility study, excuse me, long-range facilities and maintenance plan. As part of that study, we visited every school, we met with every principal, we met with staff at the schools, staff at the administration level, we had engineers and architects with us, we looked at mechanical systems, roofs, electrical systems, the complete facility. Put that together in a comprehensive report, and a general breakdown of the study is that approximately $44 million would go to elementary schools, a little over $32 million to middle schools, over $53 million to high schools, nearly $16 million in support facilities, about $19 million for technology, and about a half million program contingency for a total of $165 million. So we brought that report to the board, and they decided to go ahead with a referendum. It was held on November 8th, 2016, in that amount of $165 million. It was an extremely well-run campaign. Part of the success of it, I believe, was that there was something for every facility, something for every student to really upgrade your facilities. The outcome of it was your voters overwhelmingly supported it, with 78% in favor. According to Haley Bowers, one of our marketing folks, that is the third highest approval rating in the history of referendums in South Carolina. So y'all have a lot to be proud of with that. Going to ask Bob to come up right now and give you a little bit of an update on what was actually accomplished through this referendum and the building program.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Dumb?
Sure.
Before Mr. Cram sits down, Mr. Cram, I, I think you're a little humble. Could you give us your position, please, with MBCon?
Yes, I'm executive vice president and division manager for MBCon.
Yeah, and I appreciate you coming down here and expressing all this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Dumb, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board, pleasure to be here to give you, I'm trying to just get a brief update on what we've done to the building program. Again, this is just broken down by areas here. Andrews Elementary School, we renovated the media center, the auditorium, we expanded the kitchen, we also expanded the cafeteria at Andrews. At Sandpit, we put a new entrance in there, renovated the media center, and we did repairs to the roof, we ended up replacing all the fasteners, and then painted that roof. At Rosemary Middle School, we put a new roof on the low roof there, renovated the media center. At Andrews High School, of course, we did the new track, we did the new auxiliary gym, we did improvements to the stadium, new tennis courts. We also renovated the media center at Andrews. The Carvers Bay area, Brown's Ferry, we renovated the media center, put a new entrance on that school. At Plantersville, again, we renovated the media center, expanded the parking area, put a new drop-off canopy on that school. At Pleasant Hill, again, we renovated the media center, put in a new canopy out front, renovated the front entrance, put a new bus canopy at, at the back. At Carvers Bay Middle School, we provided a new roof for the low roof area, renovated the media center. And again, at Carvers Bay High School, again, we provided the new auxiliary gym, the track, new tennis courts. We also renovated the media center, did some significant drainage improvements to the stadium and softball and baseball fields. The Georgetown area at Maryville, again, we provided a new roof, provided additional parking, provided a new entrance canopy, a new entrance for that school. At Kensington, again, we renovated the media center, added some additional parking to that school, we're in the process of putting a new roof on that school. At McDonald, we expanded the cafeteria, did a massive improvement to the front parking lot and drop-off area for that school, and again, we're providing a new roof in that area right now. At Georgetown Middle School, we renovated the media center and the auditorium, put a new front entrance on that school. Again, at Georgetown High School, we provided, again, a new auxiliary gym, tennis courts, approved the baseball fi, or the practice fields out there, we expanded the dining room, we painted most of that school, did some major improvements to the career center out there, and again, we provided improvement to the football stadium entrance out there. At Walkham Mall, at Walkham Mall Elementary School, again, we renovated the media center, renovated the gymnasium and the cafeteria. We also provided a new drop-off canopy for the bus loop, and we're providing a new drive at the drop-off area. At Walkham Mall Intermediate, of course, we provided the new auxiliary gym, new band room in there, and also provided another drive around the back of that school. Then, of course, at Walkham Mall High School, we provided new classrooms, mostly science rooms, provided the new auxiliary gym, new entrance to the stadium, new tennis courts, did improvements to the field, new press box and improvements to the stadium out there. All these projects, on this entire program, we've provided everything in the base scope of work to date, with the exception of a new roof at Sandpit, which we didn't think was necessary, that's a metal roof. We merely did repairs to that roof and painted it, and at Walkham Mall Intermediate, called for a new HVAC system, but that system's not old enough to be replaced. Those are the only things we didn't do in the original Bond Program. Everything else was provided. Everything else was provided, I'm gonna say the possible exception of the elevator at Howard Adult Center, everything's provided on schedule. And I think that I've gotten feedback from everyone that I think we've had high-quality renovations and additions everywhere. I think everyone's been extremely satisfied with what we've done. Based on that alone, this has been a tremendously successful project. We provided everything that the district asked for in a timeframe that was asked, in a high-quality manner. This next slide, though, I'm sorry, boy, I didn't get to the facilities. Boy, supporting facilities, we provided a new building for facilities there that was sorely needed. At JB Beck, we provided expansion for technology, a new front entrance, and of course, we provided new HVAC. At Howard Adult, we provided major renovation with windows and HVAC, and again, provided an elevator. Then, as an additional project, we've also provided the bus lot out at Waukesha so that we could relieve that parking area at Waukesha High School. This is the next slide I was gonna talk about. In addition to all we've done through eight phases, one, two, three, and four, and the alternates, we've added over $16 million of additional scope that was beyond the original Bond Program. So that's been a huge improvement for this district, and just shows the value that we've added. This is over 10% of the original Bond Program, that we've added additional scope projects. We've actually added more because some of the contingencies on site, we've used that to do other improvements that I haven't reflected here. But again, this is a huge gain for the district and the community, and I think shows what value you've gotten out of this building program, that we've been able to add that much beyond the original scope. And then this last slide, I think, brings the whole thing together, is that for all that we've done, done it all on time, high quality, we're still projecting to have over $16 million in additional funds remaining in contingency for all the work that we've done. I think it'd be hard-pressed to say this hasn't been a hugely successful program by any measure. And of course, everyone here is responsible for that, from the direction of the superintendent, guidance from Mr. Davis, Ms. Ackerman, the construction committee includes Craig Evans, Brian Clark, now-retired Ellie McDaniel, Tony Holcomb, Bill Crompton, our own Dr. Caffaro was part of that. We've been closely involved with every principal and their staffs on every school, they've been involved in the design process, through the construction process. The teachers and staff have been exceptionally cooperative in allowing us to get into areas after school, you know, we had errors there, we've had extreme cooperation from everyone. The staffs here at the Beck Center, from accounting to food service, technology, safety, management program, maintenance, all those folks have been highly involved in this program through the whole process. Architects, engineers, construction managers, contractors, vendors, suppliers, testing firms have all been involved in this, we've had thousands of people involved in this, and not least of which is the board, and the former board members that have been involved in making the critical decisions to move ahead, approving the contracts, approving people that have actually been responsible for this. This program's been a huge success, and I don't think it's too much beyond, with all the stress we've had, everything, we stop for a minute and give ourselves a hand for a job well-done. I think everyone's delivered a tremendous product for this community and this district that I think will be sustained for another 20 years or more. And again, I'm happy to be part of this and grateful to be part of it, I've certainly enjoyed it.
Well, we got to definitely tip our hats to you guys. I was involved with the first Bond referendum back in the late '90s, and it did an awful lot of good. We built a lot of new school buildings, but the oversight at that time could not compare to the oversight you guys provided. Numerous, numerous problems constantly were brought to our attention, and all I remember from your move, Mr. Bob, is nothing but good reports, being on time, being within budget. It's been a smooth, seamless process, for us, anyway. I know you had your headaches with it, but I tell you, MBCon really, really earned every nickel you got. It was a pleasure.
Well, we thank you for that, but again, there's a lot of people involved with that, and particularly the district as well, and yourselves.
Oh, no question, no question.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, the communication, that every month, we know what has been going on, what's to come the next month, has been super. Your communication, keeping us up-to-date, it's been great. Thank you.
And I will tell Mr. Price, the reason we had that 78% approval was, one of our directions to the superintendent back then was, maintain what we got. We don't want to walk in schools and see dirty floors, trash overflowing, ceilings falling out, and I think because we were able to accomplish that, that's why we got that 78% approval, plus the fact that everybody was getting something.
Well, this has been a very successful program and a great partnership, and we appreciate the opportunity to be part of it. Excuse me, so let's talk about moving forward a little bit. There's still some remaining Phase Three projects to be completed. About $7 million worth of roofs, $2 million worth of fire alarms, a couple of million dollars in light upgrades, and if you chose to have MBCon continue to finish out the program, program management costs, and I will note that the existing contract does allow you, we've been here nearly five years, the existing contract does have a provision to extend it for two more years at your pleasure. Taking the available funds from Bob that he mentioned, the $16,530, and I want to make one other point before I go further on this. Bob talked about the $16.5 million remaining, you add the $16.5 million in additional projects, that's $33 million. That's 20% of your original referendum and added value for additional things to be done, which is really quite an accomplishment. But if you take that $16,530 of available funds, subtract out the Phase Three project costs, you've got about $3.2 million left. We're recently asked to evaluate stadium upgrades, including artificial turf at the high school football stadiums. We estimate that cost to be about $5 million. To do all of that would require about $1.7 million in additional funding, if you chose to go down, if you chose to proceed with that. Want to return to the first slide and talk about the core values. Excuse me, once again, good facilities support what you're trying to do here. The study we did five years ago, we've accomplished pretty much everything called for in that study, but our recommendation is, it's time to go ahead and upgrade the facility study, time to do a new study. And in this study, you know, buildings age, priorities change, this will give us a fresh look at it. Now, Bob and his team have been in the schools every day for the last five years, so they've got a pretty good handle on it. But we would recommend that you consider doing an update to the facility study. We would, again, visit every school, meet with every principal, meet with staff to evaluate what you have, and assess the current state of facilities. Look at what the needs are, assess costs to those to give you a look ahead on both a five-year and 10-year outlook. Five-year plans can be pretty accurate for what you need, 10-year gets a little more speculative, but it still gives you a guideline. Bottom line, this is who would provide a plan for the future of Georgetown County schools in terms of facilities. That's our presentation. I want to thank you again for allowing us to be your partner, and Bob and I are certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at all? You know, one group of people we neglected to thank profusely are the taxpayers. That 78% that approved it, and even people that didn't vote to approve it, we certainly appreciate their tax dollars, because we know it's a sacrifice, and I think they'll see that their money was well-stan.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If I could invite Mr. Davis and Mr. Johnson up to the podium, that's a new item that's presented for the first time tonight, and that came from some walkarounds that they've done with principals around the district at all of our high schools. And it's not just stadiums that would be addressed in that project, so I'd like to invite Mr. Davis and Mr. Johnson to share additional information about that specific line item.
Mr. Dumm, members of the board, Mr. Price, good evening. Mr. Johnson has spent a lot of time communicating with the athletic directors as well as administrators at our schools on their priorities for their athletic facilities, and so I'm gonna ask him to come and kind of share what we are looking at with this project and everything that it will entail.
Good evening, good evening. Yeah, after spending time with the principals and the ADs at each school, you know, and doing our own evaluations, you know, we feel like the synthetic turf would be a major, major improvement, upgrade for our football fields, our, you know, soccer, all of the sports that play on those fields. Included in that, you know, are public restrooms, and this involves all sports for all athletic facilities, baseball, softball, football, any public restroom, we would like to go in, make improvements, make upgrades, make it a, you know, something that when we invite the public into our events, that, you know, we try to present the best, you know, possible situation for them. Also includes the upgrade of some of our bleachers, some of our football stadiums, visiting bleachers are very outdated, you know, we're starting to get to the point where we're becoming unsafe, and so we need to address that issue by, you know, getting some new bleachers, getting concrete underneath them to keep them stable, and make the, make the walkway handicap accessible to get to those bleachers. So all of that is included in the stadium and athletic facility, you know, renovations that we're proposing.
Questions? All right, I guess we'll wait to hear a proposal from you, Mr. Price.
Before we break, if I could get the slide presentation to go back one or two slides to the, to the Phase Three. Come forward. Right there. So the Phase Three proposal had already been approved with a subtotal of $13 million. You see that if the stadium upgrades were to be approved, that would put us in excess of $1.7 million of available funds. So one particular idea was to look at the fire alarm upgrades that would be phased in over the final two years of our availability, and move that out of the Bond projects into capital projects. And after a meeting that I've had with Ms. Johnson, we should have capital funds available because of so many areas that our Bond Program has addressed since 2016, that we should have capital money available that we could address the fire alarm upgrades in the same schools that are in Phase Three using capital funds, which would allow us the opportunity to move the stadium upgrades into the Phase Three program, so it would not be an additional cost to us at that point. As Mr. Cram and Mr. Saber said, it would just allow us to get more projects out of our approved referendum. So you may notice tonight on the agenda, this was listed as a general, as an information item, and if it pleases the board, this is a lot of information to kind of take in. What I'd like to do at the next meeting is bring back for action. Number one, proposal to extend our contract with MBCon for two additional years to see these projects through. And then a second item, to approve the adjustment to Phase Three that would move the stadium upgrades in and move the fire alarm upgrades into capital.
Sounds like a plan, and I'm assuming if you do propose that, that that's within the legality of the bond, we can do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, something to look forward to, we'll look forward to the official proposal. Thank you, gentlemen, very much, we appreciate it, and we'll certainly look forward to maybe another two years with MBCon hanging around.
Well, we look forward to it as well, thank you very much.
Very good.
And I left one item out, and I'm locking eyes with Mr. Cram, that if, if the two-year extension is approved, that would include a 10-year facility study with those two years.
Okay, great.
I forgot to mention as well, thanks for the reminder.
Very good. Thank you all very much for everything. The last information item is an update on mental health initiatives, Mr. Caffaro. You going to Iowa this weekend?
I wish I could, I don't have much to cheer on Sunday, although, if y'all know me, you know what I mean by that, Mr. Dr. Caffaro, yeah, I understand. Chairman Dumm, Superintendent Price, board members and guests and cabinet members, I think we're gonna bring this up in a second here, you should have a copy in front of you. But just give you a little brief history. At the beginning of the school year, Ms. Ford and Mr. Price kind of challenged us to go ahead and put together a group that we talk a little bit about our mental health needs and what is going on in our schools. And so I was asked also to provide an overview, so we're gonna do that today. So next slide. I want to talk straight about our George GCSD Mental Health Advisory Committee. We had our first meeting on September 3rd, and if you bear with me, I got a surprise for you at the end. So if you're a good coach, you're a good teacher, you always kind of motivate people to, I got a surprise for you, I promise you'll love it. So September 3rd, we had a virtual kickoff. We've had committee members that came together from the various areas, and you can see that, including myself from special services and Ms. Ford from the school board, and we talked about what we did, what goes on in the schools, and some of our plans. One thing, one, two things, I'm not gonna read the PowerPoint to you, but one or two things that we wanted to work on and are in the process is, we thought that we needed to come together to have a comprehensive guide, I guess, that we can give our parents, so when there are students are looking for certain things that may not be in the school, that they have somewhere to look at. It would not be, we wouldn't vet certain things or certain groups, we'd try to add as much as we can, so we're working on that. I let that group know that I'm in a Georgetown County collaboration with the county, and we're working on that same type of manual for mental health across the board, so we're gonna do that simultaneously. The other thing that came about it is that we got ourselves involved with NAMI. And if you're familiar with NAMI, NAMI is a group that works with mental health awareness and suicide prevention. We actually had them a few years ago do some programs for us in the Waukesha area, but they do a program called Ending the Silence, and that is to decrease the stigma of mental health and mental health awareness, and talking with staff and students to know where they can turn, to not feel lost, or maybe confused, or even embarrassed about those mental health needs. And so, man, Ms. Ford got her strap on right there. So we were able to have a second meeting where we met with the NAMI representative, and then a third meeting on October 1st, in which that NAMI representative walked over the program with our guidance counselors, some administrators, school psychologists, pretty much a plethora of those in the school, and they will begin going and presenting that at the middle and high school. Question, as someone says, elementary, they have a fifth-grade program, they're working on that too, so they only go up or low as fifth grade, but middle and high school will be doing that. So we had a great discussion, we're excited about that, we've had three meetings so far, unfortunately virtually, but maybe sooner or later we'll, we'll get together. So next slide. Some of the things that go on in school, want to talk about Waukesha Mental Health, we do have a partnership with them. We do have a partnership with them. Currently, they have four schools that are covered. Their other clients have to go into the office. We've had more coverage in the past, but as you all know, and we see it every day, there is a shortage. There's a shortage of mental health workers, there's a shortage of teachers, there's a shortage of workers in our restaurant industry as well. So they have four schools that are covered that kind of go in between the high school and middle school and they are working on trying to get more clinicians. So our understanding is that we would have all schools covered through Waukesha Mental Health, but if we don't, next slide. We offer RBHS services here. I kind of laid it out to let you know that right now and because of your support and because of the state and federal support with ESSER funds, we're able to add five more additional RBHS counselors. We're able to cover every school right now except for McDonald and Pleasant Hill. And October 11th, we are interviewing for that last position. We hired five. The last time we did, we needed some more clients, so we put it out there and we have some very good clients. And so by October 11th, we'll have at least a person that will be able to cover McDonald Elementary and Pleasant Hill and we will be able to cover all our schools, including CM Coastal Montessori and Howard. And so you have a breakdown of where they're at. That changes when the need is. I will tell you, I talked to Mr. Steyer who's over that program or assists us. All those newer schools, most of them are elementary that were added this year, have pretty hefty caseloads already. So we're excited about them working and getting those kids involved and working with that. And so a lot of times people ask, what is RBHS? Next slide. Rebuild of Behavior Health Services. The program, of course, is designed to help children with history disruptive and emotional behavior patterns in the school and home setting. Next slide. And that's important because we try to work with that. I got a couple blurbs up there, but I'm only going to go over two of them with you, I think, that really stands out, excuse me, three. The goals of Behavior Health Services. The first one is assist students in developing and utilizing pertinent coping skills and improving emotional and behavioral health issues. It's pretty much what they do. The other one I want to highlight is to assist caregivers of the students. So you say caregivers, that's right, parents and guardians. There's a, there's a small facet. I'm not going to say it's not a huge facet, but parent involvement has to be involved and there's a lot of communication between the RBHS counselor and that parent to kind of help do some things, especially when we try to carry over into the home place. And then lastly, provide a full range of preventive, again, preventive, early intervention and clinical services in the school environment. Where we kind of fell, I'm going to say where we fell short, is that we didn't have those RBHS counselors in elementary school. We had them in the middle and high school. But if we are going to go ahead and stand by that last one where we say early intervention and, early, excuse me, preventive and early intervention, then we have to go into our elementary schools and we're there now. So this is, you know, we always look for the silver lining of what the pandemic has brought us. This is one silver lining and I think is a great thing for Georgetown County and our students. Next slide. I want to talk about the referral process. It's there, but since we do have a public audience, students with emotional or behavioral issues are identified by who? Teachers, counselors, principals, assistant principals, and parent. It's a pretty easy process. It's a pretty easy process. And lastly, if they do have an IEP, that can be written through their IEP and then you see some of the other information about that. But basically, if there's a need and we have the space, we can go ahead and meet them. Nice thing about that is it's no cost. It's free to our parents, right? It doesn't cost them a thing to go and get that. It is not long-term deep therapy, I want to make that clear too as well. There are some things like trauma that goes on in students' lives that you really need a deeper clinician type situation and they'll be able to help you with that. So I gave you that overview right there. Do you have any questions or do you want to know the nice little treat that y'all might be able to get? Ready, drum roll? Mark your calendars now, October 29th. It's back. Halloween at Beck, when we bring our special abilities students down, over 200 plus will be outside. Thank you, Mr. Walker, don't even know, but Parks and Rec is allowing us to use their parking lot in the back, so we're not being in the building this year as opposed, it's been almost two years and a lot of us missed it great, Billy, and it's a great morale booster and a happy thing that we do here at District. So I invite you all, of course, you were invited anyway, but at least got your attention to listen through to. So any questions? Thank you.
Any questions at all for Mr. Cafares?
Just want to wake you all up a little bit. All right.
I just want to thank you for spearheading this, for putting this together, for making the vision a reality, because this program is definitely necessary.
Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, it's necessary when it's critical, when it's a crisis situation, but you bringing it to our attention and putting a framework together will at least allow parents to know they have resources if and when they should need it. So thank you.
Right. And good things you pointed out, one thing is our group talked about is trying to let parents and everybody know what's out there, not only in the school system, but outside too. And that's what our community group that we work with, Tylen's Health and the judicial system and other providers in the county work together to get that message out to. So thank you very much. Be safe, both body and mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cafares. Appreciate that information. Now would be the time for any board superintendent comments or requests. I would just point out that our next board meeting is October the 19th and it will be at the McEnville Auditorium at Georgetown High School. Other comments or requests?
I just want to ask one quick question. Are we having any problems getting food for the, through the food service? Because I saw a very disturbing show this morning.
Yeah.
Alabama where the food service director was going to Walmart and Costco, you know, to get meat because they weren't getting their deliveries from USDA. Are we okay?
I've, I don't, I don't think Mr. Street is here tonight. Ms. Johnson works very closely with Mr. Street. I don't know if you've heard any reports, Ms. Johnson, about any concerns about availability?
Not so much on food. We've had more of a problem, I'm sorry, we've had more of a problem with the supplies, the disposables, you know, to put the meals in. As far as I know, we've been able to get the food.
Thank you.
I think you and I may have seen the same report because that caught my attention as well. It, supplies for a lot of things are in high demand right now and that list continues to grow. So it's something that we're going to need to be mindful of and to be proactive in planning in case it, in case that makes its way to us. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Let me first begin by saying thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion about the new district court ruling on Proviso 1.108. I recognize that this is a temporary injunction, but having the ability to put masks in place temporarily in the event that our numbers could change within a school or across our district should help us mitigate the risk of spread in the future if we needed to do so. But I'm thankful for the opportunity to have the discussion this evening. I'd also like to thank you for your ongoing vision and support of our bond program. It's because of this commitment, along with the leadership of Bob Sabyer, Bill Cram, and MBCon, that we have been able to accomplish all of our goals with the referendum and still be able to accommodate more needs and wishes that otherwise might not be achievable in such a short period of time. I'd like to extend congratulations to the inaugural class of the Waukesha High Athletic Hall of Fame. I had the privilege of attending their ceremony this past Friday evening and it was such a nice way to honor some incredible athletes and coaches who made such a significant impact during their time at WHS. And finally, I did not get the opportunity to share comments at the last meeting after my evaluation results were presented. I wanted to be sure to publicly thank our school board of trustees for the trust they have given me to lead this wonderful school district. The support and united commitment make GCSD such a wonderful place to live, to work, and to learn. I'd also like to thank the supporting team around me here at Beck. It is so refreshing to get to come to work every day and be surrounded by people who want the absolute best for our students and our employees. We are so fortunate to have so many committed and dedicated professionals who work in our schools. They all care about our students and are committed to helping prepare each and every one of them for future success. And finally, I want to thank God for this incredible opportunity to lead GCSD and also my family who unwaveringly supports me in this life passion of mine of public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We do need an executive session this evening for a personnel matter. Understanding that, do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matters? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We are now in executive session.